Call to order, the, what is today? The September 3 meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, the Redevelopment Successor Agency and the West Sacramento Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by Redevelopment Oversight Board Member Aaron Rebus. All right, we have a quorum president of the council, although Mr. Ledesma and Mr. Kristof are both out of town today. So we're going to proceed then to our regular agenda. The council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our legal counsel regarding one item of existing litigation, the City of West Sacramento versus U-Haul, and two matters of discussion of substantial exposure litigation and no action was taken. That brings us to Item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, the council is prohibited by state law from having a discussion or taking any action on any items that are brought up under Item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone who should do address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the front door and turn it into the clerk. In front of the city clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everybody gets a chance to be heard. And to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that flip chart simply indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We know that for some folks, speaking in public can cause some anxiety, and so we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or even any other applause or other demonstrations that we try to maintain a civil discourse here in our chambers. We take the yellow cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on an agenda item, so once we pass Item 1A, once the staff report is complete, we don't take any additional cards. So once the public discussion or the council questions has begun, there's no more testimony after that. So if you have an intention to speak on a specific item, be sure to fill out the card as soon as possible, but for sure no later than the conclusion of the staff report. All right. So with that, we do have a couple of requests to speak under Item 1A, and the first is by Edward Castrada.
Welcome, Mark. I just really have one question, and it's been kind of bugging me for quite a while now, and it has to do with Bright Park. I wondered why the monies weren't spent on Bright Park for all the need that's out there, for all the kids that play baseball out there, the kids that play soccer, all those families that go out there. What happened to the money? Why hasn't it been spent on Bright Park? Has it been allocated somewhere else? And anybody would like to answer that or give me some idea where I could find out?
All right. What we do is we take all the comments under Item 1A, and then we, to the extent that we have questions that the city manager, we can answer, we do that at the end. So we don't have a, there's not, we don't do a dialogue under Item 1A because of those state rules.
Okay.
Okay. But we will get to that as soon as we complete the testimony.
A lot of people want to know.
All right. Well, they'll probably have to wait eight minutes, I'm guessing, based on the number of cards we have. All right. Clayton Douglas.
Thank you. My name's Clayton Douglas. I'm a small concrete contractor in business with my son. We contracted with Martin Brothers in the city of West SAC to do a project known as Westfield Village, replacing sidewalk, city curb and gutter. There was a lot of additional quantities added on as we were doing the project. Long story short, we have come to terms with the Public Works, specifically Drew and Vin on quantities, but we haven't been paid. It's been a year. Mr. Mayor, you've received, I don't know, maybe 50 phone calls and no response. We've constantly called and emailed Drew. We don't get a response. I personally talked face to face with Vin. He promised me in February we'd be paid. We haven't been paid. It's been put on the agenda, it's been taken off. It's ready for approval, but nobody wants to get it approved. We haven't been paid. We're in a financial position now, our company, and me personally, and it's wrong. It's not the integrity in the way people do business. We held up our end of the bargain. We jumped through a lot of hoops for the Public Works Department in the city of West SAC. They didn't like some of the concrete work, no positive water flow. We made it happen. We tore concrete out on our dime and made it happen. We've done three different punch lists. We've tried, and we have been honorable with our dealings, but the city of West SAC has not. And I'm really disappointed, and we have to have some resolve, and we have to be paid. We're owed about $130,000, and that might be as well as a mil, mil three to a small company like us. We got a PG&E bill. My mother had a stroke last night. I left Antioch to come here to try to get paid. This is ridiculous, you guys, and I don't know why you don't communicate. It's not right. This is a small town. It's a good town. I like the town. I live in Pollock Mines, I've been there for 25 years. It has the same flavor. It's a community, and I just don't get why we get treated the way we're getting treated. I guess that's about it. My son can follow up with a little bit more detail.
All right. Thank you. Joel Douglas.
So, just to follow up on what my dad said, I'm the other half of the owner of the DBCI Concrete. Basically, back in, last year, we performed about $90,000 in extra work, force account work directed by the Public Works Department. We did the work. Come February this year, we were told that the city ran out of money and didn't have money to pay us. We were promised it was going to get put on one of these city council meeting agendas back in February, and now it's September, and we're still trying to get paid. There's an extreme lack of communication. I've emailed you, Mr. Mayor, 20 times. I've emailed Drew and Vin, and there's no communication, and the emails we get are misleading. So we don't know which way is up right now, and we just want to get paid. That's the bottom line. We did the work, we just want to get paid. That's it. So we'd like to have some resolve as soon as possible and some decent communication from the city on when that's going to happen. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. John Freeman.
Good evening, mayor and council members. That's kind of a hard act to follow, but I'll try. I'm here tonight representing the West Sacramento Northern Waterfront, which is the Washington District, and I want to take this time, as a resident of Washington, to thank the council for all of the improvements and all of the attention that's been given to the Washington District, which is over along the river in the old Broderick area. First, I'd like to say that the code enforcement has been doing a great job representing West SAC, responding, sorry, responding to West Sacramento access reports about rubbish and trash cleanup. Second, the West SAC Police Department has been doing an excellent job of enforcement. Third, after talking with city staff, Louise Collins today about the status of the homeless coordinator, RFP, I learned and fully support the city's efforts towards creating a new West Sacramento city position that will be addressing West Sacramento homelessness issues once the position has been filled. Now, moving forward, I'd like to make a suggestion that the city assist with the forming of a Business Improvement District, known as a BID, for the Washington District. And I could go on and explain it, but I'm sure you know all about it. It can be set up in many different forms, like the business, businesses could pay a tax or a levy in order to fund projects within the Washington District boundaries. There's other tools such as Business Improvement Area, Business Revaluation Zone, Community Impact District, Special Services, and all of these things I'm talking about can be read about further at Wikipedia under Business Improvement District. Thank you for your listening to me, and I thank you for the time.
John. Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record. And I continue to have problems riding the number 240 bus from the Home Depot, Walmart, IKEA area. Half the time, we get back to the transit center, and the number 35 is already taken off. So I think we should seriously consider rearranging the time so that the 240 takes off 10 minutes earlier and gets back 10 minutes earlier, and so we don't have those 50, 55 minute waits over here at the transit center for the number 35. And since that change has been made to strap, to lock the seats in the up position, those folding front seats, it's, I feel it's going to discourage people from shopping, not only West Sacramento, but Davis and Woodland as well. And I think we should at least get to working on reversing those front seats and taking out one set of seats so that we can have space in there for the shopping carts. And meanwhile, if we did go back to using the folding seats, I can't understand why we couldn't just require anybody using those folding seats strapped down so that if the bus has to come to a quick stop, they would be held in place, they wouldn't fall forward. But that's too simple, apparently. So I don't know what else to say, but I also noticed that we keep talking about water shortage and don't use any water here and there, but it seems to me like if we use too little water, then tree roots are going to cause more sidewalks to raise up, and we're going to have more sidewalk repair needed. So I think that should be considered also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. And Matthew Hargrove.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for having me here this evening. I brought some posters, but they're all over City Hall, thank you, so I didn't even really need to bring them. Again, my name is Matthew Hargrove. I grew up in West Sacramento. I'm raising a family. That's my son Jack back there. Some of you know him. I currently serve on the Parks Commission, and I previously have served on the Housing Commission for the city of West SAC. Proud West Sacramento. Approached the city late last year, early this year, to see if they'd be interested in partnering in an event on the Northern Waterfront. So, oh, John left. Oh, there he is. So I would like to echo the comments that not only has the city been very responsive to citizen requests to put on a fun event in town, but the area that we're working in there is, it's just a beautiful park. I'm here representing the Northern California Cyclocross Association, better known as a few folks who got together and said, "Let's approach West SAC and see if they'd be willing to partner with us on an event." The city parks, immediately when we told them what we'd like to do, said, "We're in. How can we help?" and have really moved forward. It's been a very good working relationship with the city parks. And the local West Sacramento chamber, Denise is not here this evening, I know you all know Denise, but when she was approached about this, she said, "It's a fantastic idea." It's one of those stories of West SAC can do it, West SAC can punch above its weight, and West SAC, when it wants to get together and do something, can really perform above and beyond where folks expect us to. So that's, this Saturday, we are hosting the West Sacramento Cyclocross Grand Prix. This is a cyclocross bike race, which I'm sure many folks don't know what cyclocross is, but it's basically riding 10-speed bicycles around a BMX course in a beautiful park. We would like to invite everyone to come to the park this weekend and enjoy it with us. We have lots of local businesses that will be there. We have four different food trucks that will be there. We have Bike Dog, which is a local brewery from West Sacramento that will be there. And we currently have over 300 people who have registered to race in this event. When we first thought that we would be doing an event in West Sacramento, we thought the number of 150 people registering was going to be a massive smash success for us, and we've doubled that, and we haven't even gotten through all of our registrations yet. The reason why this event is so successful is because of all the names on our poster, everyone who has stepped up here to support us in this endeavor, everyone from the local bowling alley is helping us, to local real estate agents, to local mayors who have stepped up. We really appreciate it. We really focused on West Sacramento businesses in this event, and the community has really stepped up. So this is a USA cycling event. We hope to, in three to five years, actually have a national race where we will have people from around the world coming to West Sacramento, but wanted to be here tonight to let you know that we've been very successful in pulling people together, and I hope that you will come out and enjoy the event with us on Saturday. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, you, thank you, Mr. Hargrove. Just on this last one, because we're going to come through a couple of these, I just want to, this is really an incredible event that Matthew and everyone else that's been working on this and community have been putting together. There's no, there was no pre-existing organization, there's no institution, there was no major funder, just a group of folks with other lives and jobs and families and other community activities decided to put this all together, and it is first class, it's totally first class. And it really, I happened to be in Louisville, Kentucky, last week for a food policy meeting, which we'll talk about in a little bit, which was the home of the World Cyclocross Championships last year that the city helped to sponsor, along with a lot of national cyclocross advocates, and it was a gigantic success, big event. I took the opportunity to ride the Louisville course when no one was looking, just to see what riding cyclocross would be like, and it's a lot of, it's a lot of fun, it's a lot safer than I thought it would be. But it's going to be a fantastic event for, both for the folks participating, and I think there's still probably a few registration slots open, but also just as a great spectator sport of the sport itself and just the spectacle of a use for the West Sacramento Riverwalk and the waterfront that we never anticipated. But that's the sign of a good community and a good public facility that gets, you know, people are constantly reinventing and creating new uses, new ideas for. So we're really excited, I'm really excited about the event and really appreciate just the local energy and the folks who, led by Matthew, but a lot of other folks who have come together to make this a reality at such a high level. I mean, this is not going to be just a small little event on Saturday. It's a huge, huge, huge event, and so for the 99% of people who have never seen or ridden cyclocross, you ought to come out and check it out, but it's also going to be the food and the drinks and the, just the enjoying the neighborliness of our community and our place in the region in a beautiful riverfront park. It's going to be astonishing, so certainly encourage folks to check it out. There's links to it, I know, on our website as well. Matthew's, I think, given the information here, it's also, you can find the site on Facebook and elsewhere as well, so I know we'll all be out there, so terrific. All right. So a couple of other issues under 1A. I want to, just the Bright Park piece, I just wanted to, when we approve the, like most of our planning processes, we undertake planning before we have the resources to do anything. This is how the Bridge District happened, it's how Southport happened, it's how almost all of our projects. And we do that because we want to have really excellent plans that will help us get funding for significant improvement projects in our community. So we undertook the Bright Park Master Plan really with almost no money to pay for it, not for the planning, but for the actual park improvements. We have a small amount of seed money that we can make, can be made available from the Rivers Project that was constructed, but that's nowhere near enough for the whole project. And we know we will, at some point, be competitive for state and federal and other grants, and we will be using the funds that we do have in order to meet the matching requirements for those grants. So we, even if, you know, even if we had $100,000, we don't want to go out and just spend that right now on the project and then have no money next if we win a grant and the grant says, "Well, we'll give you $5 million for Bright Park, but you have to kick in $50,000." And we were like, "Well, we don't have $50,000. We spent that all at the beginning." So that's, that's what's happened with the Bright Park process. There was no money to begin with. We began, I mean, other than a small amount of change essentially for future matches and some minor improvements that are going to be underway as part of the capital budget that the council approved, but sort of the large-scale Bright Park Master Plan improvements are still, they're still in our capital project plan for application for additional grants. So we expect there will continue to be some small improvements that are made, but the grand vision that we are fully committed to achieving from the Bright Park Master Plan will be awaiting future funding, future funding sources. Mr. Lowell, I can't speak really to the bus, the bus pieces. The issues around operations of bus seats and timings and all of that are not actually within the council's jurisdiction. They're fully within the jurisdiction of the Yolo County Transportation District, and I know you attend their meetings as well. And with respect to the DBCI issue, this is not, it's not, hasn't been a council issue. If the city manager can give us a report in our, you know, in our packets, we're aware of the issues. The council does not itself process payments, but I know we'd be interested in the history and the status of that project, given the issues that were raised this evening. And last one was the Business Improvement District. We're very familiar with those. We've made several attempts at BIDs in districts that actually have enough businesses to support them, and they're a challenge. We've had, we're continuing to interest in doing them along the West Capitol Corridor, as an example. There's a lot of challenges and obstacles to accomplishing them, be more difficult in a district that doesn't have as many businesses and/or where the businesses are state of California owned, because the state of California typically doesn't vote yes to participate in the BIDs, but we have it on our punch list of activities, on our joint waterfront master plan list of potential funding sources for waterfront, for riverfront and waterfront maintenance and activities and events that we adopted jointly with the city of Sacramento a few years back. All right. So with that, we're going to move on to Item 1B, which is council communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mayor Protem Johannesen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Yolo County Housing Authority met on August 21st, and really, we had a number of presentations, but the most significant was that the Housing Authority, for the second year, has received the performance, the Housing Choice Voucher Program Award of Excellence. And what that is, is it's basically how the Yolo County Housing, it actually received a perfect score, this was the second year in a row, and it's considered to be a high performance agency now, and it has been for the last five years. So what that really means is, you know, they keep up with inspections, they keep up with their, on top of income determinations, enforcement, rent reasonableness, and a number of other factors that go into how this housing, the voucher program is organized. So that was good news, second year in a row.
All right. I had two related reports. So first, I attended the Mayor's Innovation Network Summer Meeting in Chapel Hill, North Carolina, last week, and it was, it's a, I don't normally participate in that group because it's one too many, one too many networks of mayors to participate in, but this session was actually quite useful, was sponsored by the city of Chapel Hill and the Jersey North Carolina Chapel Hill with particular focus on form-based codes, which has been a particular of interest of ours. We've talked about this, you know, the potential use of form-based codes in some target, our target districts of opportunity in our city. Pioneer Bluff was an early stage one where we've had that discussion. Coming out of that, the form-based code discussion among all these mayors and some kind of leading planners and others in Chapel Hill, I'm more, I'm as convinced as ever that in the right circumstances, that that could be an appropriate solution for us in particular places, and I would still, I still hope that we'll be able to pursue that option in some of the riverfront mixed-use districts that we have in our community. We had a very extensive conversation about affordable housing and strategies for how to address, you know, housing affordability, including all the strategies that we've ever tried in our, in our city. But unlike form-based codes, I didn't come out of that session with a sense that there was something that other cities are doing that we haven't already tried. There's just a deep dissatisfaction with our, with the tools that are in the box for municipalities to really address housing affordability in a sustainable, real, real way that doesn't involve simply abandoning neighborhoods to not be that, to not, to be neighborhoods that nobody wants to move into, this challenge between gentrification and abandonment. And then there was also a significant focus on entrepreneurship, and we toured a couple of the, they have a startup accelerator, a startup incubator right across the street from UNC Chapel Hill that's all students. So students start up their own businesses of various types, not just technology, though there's certainly a good number of technology businesses that begin there, immediately across the street from the university. It's deeply integrated with the curriculum at the campus as well, but I thought it was really a fascinating way of, for the city to think about trying to get those students to stay in the community and to generate real businesses and economic value and innovation. There's no, and there's no reason why that couldn't be here. And then there's, we went to a second-level accelerator that some of those students graduate into, and then others in the community who aren't students start at, where it's a more traditional kind of a space that we have had before in the past, although this is slightly more advanced. But thinking about ladders of startups and incubators and accelerators in a way that I don't think we have done as much in our community was, I thought there was some good lesson, so I'll share some of the papers from that Innovation Network with the council as well. And then in Louisville, Kentucky, five mayors across the country were, came together on food policy. They'd asked, the five cities were Louisville, Baltimore, Madison, Wisconsin, West Sacramento, California, and Tallahassee, Florida, all of whom have been doing, all five of our cities have been sort of national leaders on the food policy, food hub, food innovation space. And so I was, I presented on a variety of our initiatives around the urban farms, around the attraction of companies, you know, like we did today at Bear Crop Science, but the full suite of international food companies that have been locating here on farmers' markets, on a variety of the initiatives that we've been doing, some of which are being done in these other cities as well. And, you know, virtually all cities of this type now who are looking at food are doing urban farms. Everyone's done farmers' markets. Farmers' markets have gone, I mean, they've exploded, I think, by a thousandfold in the last eight years across the country, but much more sustained policy work as well. We had a long afternoon with Wendell Berry, and I'm not a food activist, but, you know, for folks who are, he's, you know, he's a rock star in the, in the community, actually really useful in terms of helping to focus around how exactly to deal with the industrialization of food, that simply denying it and rejecting it and hoping that we can solve everything with farmers' markets is not an effective strategy for food justice or for scale or feeding hungry people, while at the same time, the, kind of the, you know, the worst of the industrial food complex is, I think, we're all well aware of the implications that that's had on our society and our economy and on our health. So thinking about ways to approach that, and what's happening at Tomura and at Bear Crop Science are good examples of the spaces where large-scale companies make, are making a difference in that space. Another, though, Louisville had an example, and I'm going to, I'll get some of the details for the council and the managers as well. They're also developing a food hub, but their concept of a food hub is actually a specific place, and there are two or three of these happening in the country. Baltimore is another one, where there's a large piece of property that, on that property, they are consciously trying to locate a set of connected, related, you know, food sector, you know, activities, both industries and farms that connect with one another. The food bank in Louisville, the food bank said, "Look, we are sending trucks out to rural areas to feed the hungry in rural areas. Those trucks, they're refrigerated, they come back empty. What if we co-located with some of these food processing facilities and distribution facilities?" facilities at the food hub in Louisville and brought food back in from the farms, you know, to be raised in value?" So there's, I thought that what they're doing in both of those two cities, trying to take some of what we're doing here, not accidentally, but what we're doing here is with kind of global headquarters, big facilities, which I still think is the stronger strategy, but they're not mutually exclusive either. And so thinking about whether we might, you know, look at some of the models that are emerging in other places in the country around how to develop really thoughtful, coherent, integrated food systems in a particular hub was a promising idea. So, all right. If there's no other reports, then that brings us to Item 1C, which is Appointments. And we have a vacancy on the Board of Appeals. And I would, we've had two applicants for that seat. The councils have received their applications previously, and I'd like to appoint Bill Natty to the vacant seat on the Board of Appeals. The term obviously expires in December or so, when the, after the election for the mayor and council. But in the event that there are additional appeals, you never know. So I'd like to appoint Mr. Bill Natty to that vacancy and ask if there's a motion to confirm the appointment.
Also move?
All right. It's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries. Three, zero. All right. With that, that brings us to our presentations. The first is the presentation of a proclamation declaring September is Literacy Awareness Month. So Mr. Mayor Protem Johansson's moved, and councilmember Sandine seconds that the proclamation be adopted. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries. This proclamation is before the council at the request of Mayor Protem Johansson, so I've asked him to present it on our behalf.
Come on back here. All right.
We can see on the official side.
All right. We've got a proclamation recognizing September's Literacy Awareness Month. So rather than reading the proclamation, I know there's a number of people here that would like to talk about this. But basically, what this does is addresses adult literacy issues in California. Twenty-three percent of Californians are illiterate, and the theory is that the parents are the first and best teachers of the children. So with the Department of Employment and Social Services, with the public library system, and with California First Five, and great volunteer staff, it's really how to bring literacy awareness to the public and also to help reduce illiteracy in our neighborhoods, or our cities. So who is going to, we have some folks here from the Friends of the Library, Library Advisory Board, and the Yolo County Library who would like to accept it. Absolutely.
Should I stay on this side?
No, because we can actually see you on our screen. The rest of the world should see your beautiful faces.
I always feel nervous turning my back on somebody. I'm Susan Marty-Mo, and I'm currently Chair of the Yolo County Library Advisory Board. I'm in my fifth year on the board, serving as your representative for the City of West Sacramento. I'd like to introduce the others who are here also with me. We have Bill Campbell, who is the Vice Chair of the Library Advisory Board. He represents the County Supervisory District One, which includes West Sacramento and Clarksville. Linda Campbell, who's the President of the West Sacramento Friends of the Library, and Elizabeth Gray, who is the Assistant County Librarian for Yolo County. I just wanted to thank the mayor, the city council, for continuing to support the library here in West Sacramento, the Arthur F. Turner Community Library. We rely greatly on the support of the city. We would not be open as many hours, we would not have as many materials, the library would not be as fantastic as it is without the support of the city. I'd like to introduce Linda.
The West Sacramento Friends of the Library provides both volunteer and financial support for library programs and collections. And this evening, we brought some brochure, membership brochures, and some information, if anyone would like to pick up a copy. And here is Bill Campbell.
That's my wife. All I'm going to say is that the library, the new library we have over there, which is fantastic, and if you've never been, you've got to go. We're going to be celebrating our fifth year already, which is amazing, on Saturday, October 11th, from 1:00 to 4:00, and everybody is invited. And Elizabeth?
I was just going to mention a little bit more about Yolo Reads, which is the Yolo County Library Literacy Program. It's the only program providing free literacy services for all of Yolo County. We work with Woodland, who has their, Woodland City Library Literacy Program. So between us, both, we cover all of Yolo County. And this program is a one-on-one match. So a lot of people who are, who speak English and maybe, for example, grew up but didn't finish school and were not successful readers in school, have a job, have a family, they're our neighbors, they work with us, somehow they get by without reading very well. It takes a lot of courage, as an adult, to say, "I want to improve my reading and writing." And what this program does is it's confidential, so people can approach us confidentially, and we match them with a tutor who becomes like a mentor. They meet one-on-one, and it remains confidential as much as the learner wants that to be confidential. And in this way, they, people improve their reading and writing, are able to improve their job skills, are able to help their children with their homework, are able to read to their very young children. And in this way, our communities become healthier and people become more involved. And Councilmember Johansson mentioned how it's very important for young children to have good literacy experiences, so we can break a cycle that might happen where somebody's not able to read and write as well as they might need to. And then the children have also a hard time in school, and in our culture, which is very print-oriented. At our last celebration, we have a celebration every year to celebrate these people who have addressed this challenge in their life. And at our last one up here at the West Sacramento, the Arthur F. Turner Community Library, there was a woman who, there were two women spoke, and one woman spoke about how she had been living for so long and not reading that, when she finally was able to read, it was like a whole new world had opened up to her, that she hadn't realized had been there right in front of her the whole time. And I think that speaks a lot to the experience of people who don't read well. A lot of our culture and what we go through every day is written, and if you can't read, you miss out on that. And another woman spoke about, and her whole family stood up, her husband and her children, to support her and to say how much difference it has made that now that she can read and write in English and help the kids, the younger kids, with school, and that she had set such a good example for her children in striving to learn and improve herself. So although we're a small program, we address people one by one, it's a very worthwhile program, and we're always looking for more people to help, more volunteers to meet, to work with somebody to help improve their reading and writing. So I brought things to hand out, and I'd also like to invite everyone to learn more about the program at our Sixth Annual Literacy Celebration, the 30th Anniversary of Literacy Services in California Public Libraries, and it will be Thursday, September 25th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Davis Library, part of the Yolo County Library System, our partner librarian, Davis.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your support of the library. We really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. That then brings us to our consent agenda, as Mr. Mayor Protem Johansson's returning to his seat. Are there any items on consent to remove, or any items for separate question or comment? All right. Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll move the consent agenda.
All right. I don't feel like I need to say who's doing it tonight for the city clerk. All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries. The consent agenda is adopted. All right. That brings us then to Item 7, which is a public hearing and first reading of draft ordinance 14-9, amending Title 17 of the municipal code pertaining to the retail sales of firearms and ammunition. Mr. Tilly?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, we are seeking your approval of this draft ordinance 14-9, which would amend Title 17 of our municipal code, which are the zoning provisions. And specifically, what this ordinance would do would adjust those zoning districts by which retail firearms businesses may be located. Presently, the municipal code provides for five separate zoning districts where those are permitted on a conditional basis, and this ordinance would adjust those districts and remain having been conditional in five other districts. Our present municipal code generally provides for this type of business in our lighter commercial and mixed-use zones, and the ordinance would adjust those to, into our more heavy commercial and industrial areas of town. The ordinance does not address the specific types of firearms or who may possess them and who may not. It simply adjusts those zoning districts where those businesses could be located. So we are asking you to conduct the public hearing on this item tonight and waive first reading and read by title on the ordinance 14-9. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mayor Protem Johansson?
Yes, Mr. Tilly. I'm looking at this, the map that's attached to the staff report. I think we may have, Councilwoman Sandine commented on this last week or last meeting as well. We have a huge percentage of property in West Sac, that still is eligible for these shops. I mean, I'm looking at this thing, and it's, I don't know, 30% of the city, 40% of the city, maybe more?
Yeah, that's correct. And we prepared this ordinance with one existing business in mind that wasn't a light industrial area, and as we came out going through it, there's another existing business in one of the heavy industrial areas that, if this particular ordinance were passed, would allow them to also move into a full retail direction, should they so choose. So this particular ordinance with these districts would actually aid, you know, one, if not two, existing businesses in our community.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. So we're going to open the public hearing on Item 7. We don't have any requests to speak on this, so we will close the public hearing. Item 7, further discussion. I don't think, I wasn't here for the workshop presentation on the ordinance. I'm supportive of it. I actually, you know, if I had been here, I probably would have pushed for it to be even a little bit more narrowing. I think, I'm a little concerned about the remnant parcels, essentially, that are in the ordinance, because in a couple of cases, those are intended for longer-term transition, and so I'm a little concerned about folks, you know, deciding to open up a retail firearms outlet right on the, in this area between the state streets and the Bridge District, as one example. That's not an appropriate location. It happens to be zoned in that way today, because it was on the edge of an industrial district in the past, but it doesn't really belong, I mean, that would be a very inappropriate location, long run, both for the adjacency of those two, but also because that's ultimately part of a safer-out-to-schools network. And so I might have applied a couple of extra filters to this lens, but I don't want to, but I realize if we do that, we have to unwind the whole first reading and all that. I don't want to let the somewhat slightly more perfect be an enemy of what is a good proposal. So I'm supportive of moving forward with this. We ought to pay attention to it, see how it's working, and make adjustments that are appropriate in the future. But I think this is, it's a good, reasonable solution. West Sacramento is a, you know, has a, this is a diverse community with a long history of, you know, of hunting and firearms ownership. I'm NRA certified, and Ducks Unlimited used to be our most important city council dinner of the year, and this is a big, and this city has a proud tradition in hunting and other firearms-based sports. So this ordinance is certainly not one of those issues that is, you know, just a response against guns. It's about the appropriate management of commercial activities in residential and our downtown areas that make sure that they're appropriate, as we do with so many other land uses, to make sure that there aren't too many liquor stores, that there's not a liquor store next to a childcare center, you know, that's just common, what is common sense is what our zoning code is about, and that's what this proposal does. So, any other questions or comments? Is there a motion then? Yes. Need to waive the first reading.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll move the proposed recommended action in the staff report.
I'll second that.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries. Thank you. Item 8 is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 14-48, amending the book of fees to add water waste and excessive use fines and penalties schedule.
I thought I was tall. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. The purpose of this item is to conduct a public hearing and consider adoption of Resolution 14-48, amending the city book of fees to add water waste and excessive use fines and penalties. I'd first like to make sure that we understand the difference between what water waste is and excessive use, since I think there's some confusion out there about that. Water waste is commonly a negligent act, and it can occur and be enforced at any time. For example, if you water during the rain or leave a sprinkler to go unrepaired, that would be considered water waste, as our municipal code 13.04 has defined. Whereas excessive water use, on the other hand, is a violation of the water restrictions that are outlined in the city's Urban Water Management Plan and are only in force when the city has implemented a mandatory water shortage contingency, which is currently the case in this drought. One of the restrictions currently in force is the adherence to our odd-even watering schedule, which limits our outdoor watering to three days per week. With regard to the penalties we proposed, the water waste penalties have aligned with what has been regionally adopted, and I'd also like to note that they are less than many of the other regions in this area, as demonstrated in the table provided in your general report. The penalties associated with excessive water use in the Urban Water Management Plan were adopted when the council adopted the Urban Water Management Plan in 2011. Adding these penalties to the book of fees simply adds the needed enforcement mechanism. And finally, I'd like to just mention, as we've stated in this report and past reports and presentations, that the intent here isn't to issue fines and penalties right off the bat. They'll be used as a last resort for those violators who just repeatedly offend. The idea is to continue our education and outreach and only issue penalties and fines when needed. Adopting this resolution will provide the city with that authority to issue penalties and fines if and when needed, and is our recommendation tonight. That concludes my presentation prior to the public hearing, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Are there questions at this time? Mayor Protem Johansson, or?
I'm supportive of the approach that we're taking, particularly looking at written notices for the first and second violations. You know, again, my concern, I think I expressed it last time, is just how the subdivisions are built out in our city as any other city. It's, I think it's impossible to have a lawn that doesn't water the sidewalk. I think that's just the way sprinklers are. And so, as we're moving forward with looking at enforcement, getting notices, I certainly would like to kind of see the level of notices and the types of notices we're seeing. Obviously, if it's a sprinkler head that's shooting out in the middle of the street, that's one thing, but if it's someone who's watering two days a week between the hours that they should be watering, and at the end of that period, there's runoff into the gutter, you know, I'd like to kind of see that, because I think we're going to see a lot of that, because it's just the way the subdivisions are built. And really, the only way to solve that is to take out the lawn, which is another cause. So for me, it's just a question, continue to provide information to us on what the violations are, so we can kind of, at least so I can get a kind of a sense of how this is going.
Sandine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate this. I don't have any questions for you, but I do appreciate the approach of the kind of softer first and second. That gives someone a first chance, a second chance, and then you kind of step in. And then we're not as, it gets more severe more quickly than other jurisdictions, but because I think we started out kind of gentler at the front end. So this seems appropriate to me, so thank you.
So did you consider the Sacramento framework? I mean, we're pretty close, except for the second violation.
Yeah, we did look into possibly doing a small penalty, like they have for second violation, and potentially waiving it for additional compliance. You know, they have an education component associated with that, so if somebody is issued a second violation or the $25 penalty a second violation, or the twenty-five dollar penalty is waived if they attend a workshop. Unfortunately, due to our staffing restrictions and budget, we don't have the ability to do that. And I felt that it would be easier to administer the written notifications first, rather than trying to issue a penalty right off the bat and then deal with invoicing and backing off if they complied with some other kind of education and outreach.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I'm of two minds of this, but I certainly agree with both of my colleagues about the soft touch. At the same time, I also, I mean, this is the number one, you know, on the list of all the communications I'm getting from residents daily, it's, I mean, more than half of them are reports of water waste and excessive use. There's definitely a very, you know, strong sense of feeling that I'm doing, that folks who think they're doing their part and that no one is making sure that everyone else is doing their part as well. And I think there's some funky psychology about all of this, to be sure, because, you know, the expectation that the city is going to, has, the world that some folks envision for the city, the role that we might play, should be scary to them if they actually reflected on it for a moment, you know, the idea that, oh, don't you have cameras that are catching somebody watering in their backyard out the side of the appropriate, no, no we don't, and you don't want us to. But there's, you know, we just need to be, we need, the point of two violations with written notice, you know, that sort of approach makes sense to me when, it's like the false alarm ordinance, when, okay, people don't know that this has happened, you know, it's a novel thing, it doesn't happen that often, and so they wouldn't have experience with it, maybe they don't talk to their neighbors about it. This is not one of those issues, right? Your responsibility not to waste water and to use water excessively has been clearly communicated, and not just by us, but by the media, by the other, all the other levels of government, and by people's, you know, Facebook shaming and, you know, everything else that's out there. So this, I'm not as convinced that in this particular case, the softest approach is the most, is as warranted as it is in many cases where the level of opening information isn't as good. And I generally feel when we do do that, what you've also done is you've reduced the likelihood of getting caught dramatically, because you have to get caught three times. And in regulatory theory, the more you reduce the likelihood of getting caught, the higher the penalty needs to be. It's one of the reasons why, you know, red light violation penalties are supposed to be high, because you're not, you're very unlikely to get caught. But once you impose cameras, from an economist's point of view, you're supposed to take the penalty way down, because you're going to get caught eighty percent of the time, so the penalty should reflect that. And in this case, we're both reducing the likelihood of being caught by requiring that you be caught three times, and then having this, essentially, the equivalent fines as most other jurisdictions for violations three, four, and five. So I'm, you know, one, I can count, and two, you know, I know my colleagues have made some persuasive arguments as well, so I'm certainly prepared to go forward with this, but let's pay attention to it. And if we're getting a lot of, you know, a lot of these second violations are converting to third, then the point of the second violation written notice is not being achieved, and we need to ratchet it up. Because the crisis is severe, and there's no sign of it getting better. And we have to act that way. I mean, we have to, we have to take actions that reflect that reality. This is not an area where we're trying to compete to be the easiest place to waste water in the region. We're not, we're not trying to have a low fee schedule so that people who want to waste water will choose to locate here in West Sacramento. That's not the idea. We want this to be, we want this to be fair, but we also want it to be effective. And so I hope you'll, you know, you'll let us know about the, in addition to the numbers in each of these categories, what the progression looks like, and how effective the notice parts really are at stopping people before they get to the third violation.
Definitely.
Any other comments? All right, then, is there a motion?
I'll move the recommended action.
I will second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing done. That motion carries. Did I open the public hearing on that motion? Okay. All right, without objection, we'll rescind the vote on that item and open the public hearing on item eight. And I guess I'm being punished with darkness now. I'm being sent to a corner. All right, does anyone wish to address the counsel on item eight? Seeing none, now we'll close the public hearing, return, and we'll take the motion by--
I'll move the recommended action.
--and seconded by Mayor Protem Johannesen. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed to hearing? None, the motion carries. Thank you. Item nine is a discussion of the proposed south-through road pavement rehabilitation project.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. On August sixth, staff brought to the council's attention about some of the potential issues that may come up as we complete the Mike McGowan Bridge project and the Village Parkway project. One of the, one of the issues that was brought to your attention was the poor pavement condition of South River Road between Marina Greens Drive and the new bridge. At that time, council raised three concerns. The purpose of this report is to address those three concerns and seek further direction before we can come up with some, the staff can come up with some recommendations. The first concern that was raised was the accommodation of bicycles on this section of South River Road. Staff looked into that, and by providing some of these following provisions, we feel that the bike could be safely accommodated in this section of the roadway. First of all, we are proposing to provide a minimum two ten-foot lanes with a minimum two-foot paved shoulders, minimum, and in some places, we could do more than that. And in addition to that, we would provide dirt shoulder backing, and then also, we can post share the road signs, and then we can also reduce the speed limits on this section. And also, we can continue to monitor and enforce the speed limit. By doing all these activities, we will be able to accommodate bicycle traffic in a safe way. The second concern that was raised by the council was the cost of the rehabilitation itself. Knowing that the future of this road, this section of the road is unknown, any money we spend on this section of the road could be a throwaway down the road. So that was one of the concerns. But if we limit the scope of the project to just a thin overlay, restriping, and then the shoulder backing, we could keep the cost around $200,000 or so. So we have to do some kind of rehabilitation before we can open it to the traffic. So there has to be a minimum amount that we have to spend. The third concern that was raised by the council was the cut-through traffic in that section that was in the blue area there. So we asked our traffic consultant to do some additional analysis on cut-through traffic, and their analysis, the conclusion of their analysis was that the cut-through traffic will be minimal, and it could be further reduced by monitoring and enforcing. And also, if needed, we could include additional traffic calming measures later if needed. And here with, I have Bob Grandy from Farron Pierce, he's the consultant, and he's going to explain to us briefly on what the analysis was and what the conclusion was. Bob?
Good evening. So two things, I'll talk first, kind of global issues about travel on the two bridges, and then a couple of points about the cut-through traffic and where we anticipate that might come from. In terms of a global issue, once this bridge is opened, the McGowan Bridge is open, we still anticipate the bulk of the north-south travel across the Barge Canal, eighty-five to ninety percent will stay on Jefferson. It will just be a quicker route and more accessible to most of the residents than McGowan, until the Village Parkway extension is completed about a year later, and until further segments. And as those segments are completed, more and more of the traffic on Jefferson will shift over to the new bridge. It'll be more accessible, more of a direct route. So that's just kind of big picture in terms of the level of traffic and how we expect that to evolve over time. We really looked at three different areas and routes of traffic to assess what the level of cut-through traffic. The first question was, will traffic divert from northbound Jefferson or from Jefferson over to through Gateway, through the neighborhood, identified as neighborhood number one? And in looking at that issue, the greatest, the slowest speeds on Jefferson are really south of Lake Washington. Once you pass through that intersection of Lake Washington, continue to progress north, speeds pick up. And so it'd actually take you longer to go through the neighborhood, to divert through the neighborhood, to get over, rather than go up to South River and make a right turn and use the new bridge. The only exception to that would be if you had an incident, you had some kind of accident north of Gateway that was backing up traffic, then you could see some diversion during an incident period. In that case, you'd have enforcement there to monitor that. The second area we looked at was kind of the Stonegate Drive area off to the south, identified as neighborhood number four and to the east of four. Most of that traffic is coming Stonegate to Beach to Gateway to make a right turn to go north on Jefferson. We expect virtually all of that traffic will stay on that route, because it would require them to go backwards to re-track through the neighborhood in a longer route. So it really comes down to neighborhood number three, which would have the most direct route and most direct path through north, or from south of Gateway to north of Gateway through the neighborhood. There's about a hundred homes in that neighborhood. We anticipate about, potentially up to twenty to thirty peak hour trips out of the eighty that come out of that neighborhood would go through the neighborhood and would want to use the new bridge. So we expect there'd be a small amount of cut-through traffic, if you would, but mostly from that neighborhood three area. And as was mentioned earlier, the suggestions we had was enforcement, particularly that intersection just north of Gateway at Sansom, to address the speed issue, because the main concern is not the small amount of traffic, but if folks are actually speeding up to get through the neighborhood to make up time that they would otherwise lose by going through this route. And with that kind of enforcement and monitoring, if there are other actions needed, we can work together to bring those back. With that, I'll--
Thank you, Bob. That concludes our report. Staff is seeking any direction from the council, and we would come back to the council on September seventeenth with some options and a recommendation.
All right, for me, I want more options than that. That's not sufficient for me. Having been through enough of these cut-through issues, our traffic models have been, I mean, there's nothing flawed about them, they're just, they're models of behavior, and they haven't gotten it right. And the consequences of getting it wrong are just too, I mean, they're too severe. So the, it is, as I've noticed in, you know, in the area that we built in the Bridge District and Fifteenth and all that, it's not always a faster option. But motorists are not, they're making judgments, and they're optimizing on factors other than just speed, including the amount of traffic and stops they have to deal with. And so to the extent to which you get through this neighborhood really quickly, and then you have a completely unfettered, uncluttered ride to the bridge, over the bridge, you still haven't seen another car for miles, and then you have all of South River Road, there might be a truck coming, but otherwise, you got, you have a clear shot there. It's, you know, it's mentally a much more relaxing commute, even if it's a minute longer. So I just want to, I want to be very careful about this, because the, what happens when we do that, in addition to our moral obligation to protect the neighborhood, we promised when we said we were going to, we were going to take the city up from twenty-eight thousand people, which we have been doing, that none of it would be at the expense of the existing neighborhoods, and that we have to keep that commitment. But the other is, if we want to continue our progress, we need to, you know, we need neighborhoods to feel like that, like we're doing that. So it's both out of an obligation to do it, and we need neighborhoods to believe in the future that we will keep doing that. And so traffic calming and, you know, enforcement is helpful if it was something we didn't know, we couldn't have anticipated, but we can, in this case, anticipate that that's going to be the case. And so I want to see other options, including some of the turn restrictions and all of that, in order to minimize the, I think on the map, mainly the neighborhood four, which is much larger than what you see on that map, obviously, because it includes the entire Newport region, and the, because that's the area that has, because, so if eighty-five percent to ninety percent of the Jefferson traffic stays on Jefferson, if you said that neighborhoods in the Gateway neighborhood, you look, ten to fifteen percent of the traffic on Jefferson is now going to be going right through or by you, that's a lot, that will feel like a lot of cars, regardless of their speed. I mean, obviously, fast will be definitely a problem for safety and for kids and for pets and for everything else in the neighborhood. But the sheer volume is also, is also an impact in and of itself. So I think we need to attack that problem in a serious way if we're going to open up the street to traffic, and I know that's desirable for a whole lot of reasons. I desire it too. But I think we, you know, we need some options that we can, you know, that will prevent, prevent the cut-through and not simply respond to it as we go forward for the next meeting.
So we also looked at some, to prohibit some of the turns to come into or go out of that neighborhood, to minimize some of the things, but that will, when we, if we do that, again, I don't know how many people will obey that prohibition, and they may still do it, and now it's going to cause more enforcement issues rather than unsafe enforcement issues there. So we looked at that, and we thought it may not be, it may not work, but we can look at that again, to prohibit some of the turns coming out of that neighborhood.
Well, but I know, I've had, I think we've all had conversations with either you and/or the manager, and in addition to our last meeting. For me, this is a fundamental question. So if we can't, if we can't solve it, if there's no good solution to the cut-through, then I would be supportive of simply having it be paid for bike and pedestrian in the interim until the, until Village Parkway is complete. I would rather do that than risk the health and safety and the support of that neighborhood. So that, to me, that's the, that's the choice, for my vote, that's the choice I'm putting in front of you, is do you want, if you want it, if you want South River Road, that segment to be for cars, we better figure out, we better find a solution that does work. And if we can't, then for me, that needs to just be a bicycle and pedestrian access, which I know is suboptimal, but the sub-optimization can't be at the expense of the neighborhood. So, for me. And I know, you're not asking us tonight to make a decision, you're just saying, what scoping do you need for the next, for the next agenda item? And do we have, do we have the right options on the table for the whole council to consider? Sandin?
I also, I appreciate the addition of the bike lane. That's, that addition compared to what came forward to us last time. I continue also to have concerns about the cut-through, because I, I think if we, if folks are logical, if you take the logic and the turns, and, but I think some people, some people aren't logical, and they, they just want to keep moving. So it's the fewer stoplights, it's all those kinds of things that add into that behavior. And I do have, I share the concern the mayor has put forward about our wanting to keep neighborhoods kind of whole and, I suppose, safe as well. And I just, I think, I know that this is a challenging issue, because we'll have a bridge, and we don't want to have a bridge to nowhere. We want it to be, we've invested a lot, and it's important to us, and it's a new gateway. But I do think we just need, we need to grapple with it a bit more about options. I also would be open to considering, until it's completely functional, to your point at the last meeting, Mayor, you mentioned that people will start to become habituated to a certain route, and so we could consider a pedestrian-bike route as a start. I then get concerned about the conflicts later along Pioneer Bluffs and with truck traffic, but, you know, this is such a difficult one because of the impacts on the neighborhood. I don't know if that's helping you much.
It's not what you want.
Well, we'll look at a few other options and then come to the council again with some, with the recommendation. So the main concern is still the cut-through traffic, I understand, so.
Yeah, and I know for the builders and the public works and the planners and folks like that, it seems like, okay, this is an inconsequential, inconsequential problem given this magnitude of this project, but that's, that's when our core values are tested the most, is when a very small neighborhood that doesn't, you know, doesn't have protests and stuff like that, when they are affected by our big stuff, you know, who are we standing up for them? And we have to. So I know, I mean, we're an incredibly creative team, and I know you've been through probably seven hundred options and alternatives already, so maybe there isn't a solution, but if there is one to be had, I'm sure you, I'm sure you're the ones to find it.
Yes.
All right. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council calendar?
Mayor, council members, assistant city manager Carol Richardson's on vacation, so I'll handle the calendar. Mr. Hargrove mentioned the event for this Saturday. The first race is at ten fifteen. Also on the calendar is a week from this Saturday, September thirteenth, the opening of Park Moderns in the Bridge District on a Saturday. Staff continues to work with the organi-- Staff continues to work with the organizers of TBD Fest. We met with them today, and there's another meeting next week. A lot of the details are getting worked out. We feel pretty comfortable where we are to date.
Alright, questions on the calendar? City, uh, Mayor, sorry, I thought you were reaching for your mic, that was just a piece of paper. Right, City Manager report?
Paulina Bender is gone, but during her water conservation report on water wasters and so on, I did want to say, from February to August, we are over twenty percent, twenty point six percent citywide in terms of reduction. The city is down in terms of its use by over twenty-five percent, so we are continuing to work and fine tune that. In addition to water, one of the most significant things we were looking and monitoring in this legislative, end of the legislative session was the IFD. SB six twenty-eight was approved by both houses, and is on its way to the governor. It is a, a big item for us, is it removes the vote requirement to set up an infrastructure finance district, and also would lower the threshold to, for voter approval of issuing bonds to fifty-five percent. There are, one of the things that we were closely looking at was, are there any set asides to that, and there were no set aside requirements. So, at this point, the bill looks like it's perfect for us, and there'll be more details on infrastructure finance districts in the coming months.
And we have, we have authority to send a letter to the governor?
As, a few months ago, the council did vote in support of the, the general concept.
I, while we're on your report, I, I, we've all said it to each other, and to, and to staff on, on the team, but since the Bear Crop Science event earlier today, and the one last night, the, the feedback from the entire Bear Crop Science team about their experience working with the city of West Sacramento, and our staff team in particular, was, you know, extremely positive, deeply positive, profoundly positive, and, you know, very, very frankly felt. I mean, sometimes we get folks who locate here, and they get their project done, and they're happy, and they say that in their, in their press statements and all of that, and they certainly did, Bear Crop Science did that. But at every opportunity, it was reinforced over and over and over again, and every, every single person from the, from their operation, from Germany to Chapel, to the Research Triangle in North Carolina to here last night, and, and many of them this morning reinforced that, folks who, who nobody was watching. And so, it was just a very positive feedback for, about planning, about the, our building process, about finance, the whole operation at, at City Hall, and it clearly, you know, it was, it clearly left a strong impression with them, and which, you know, both for their future plans and expansion and investments that they already have planned for next phases, but also as ambassadors to other, other companies that we're trying to recruit to come here or to stay, it was, it was a huge win for the city. So, please, you know, convey to the whole staff operation and, and, and City Hall and, you know, and beyond, you know, at least, I mean, I think I speak for all of us, and we're, we're very proud of the, of, of that accomplishment, and we know, we know that that's representative of how, how virtually everyone feels, but this was a, you know, this is a first-class global enterprise that said, you know, last night, that this was the best, this best city to do business with in, in the world. That's quite, for a state, for a company that's in China, and Japan, and Germany, and a hundred other countries, that's a pretty big statement, so.
Well, thank you, and we have to our staff, and I think Charlene's still here. Her staff, particularly the building permit, folks who met with them on almost a weekly, twice-weekly basis, did a great job consistently in those meetings, so it was a great effort.
Alright, City Attorney report? Alright, Staff direction from members of the council? Alright, we have no future agenda item requests, our motion adjourned? It's been moved by Mayor Portem Johannesen, and seconded by Ms. Sandine. All those in favor please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing done, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.